Good evening, I'd like to open the special meeting of the York County School Board, May 12th, 2016. Thank you for coming out, it's great to see so many faces and I applaud you for coming out this evening. We're gonna start right away, we've got some folks signed up to speak. Just like to remind you, you have three minutes to speak and if you would come up and state your name and your address initially, we would appreciate that. So, with no further ado, I now open the public hearing. Does anybody have that list of names? Sorry, I probably didn't do justice to your name there.
It's a difficult name. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, gentlemen and ladies, appreciate this opportunity to talk today and I'd like to thank all the candidates that submitted their names for service, Mr. Roan, Richardson, Mathis and Ms. Farley.
We'll get your address.
I'm sorry, Juan Navarette, 202 Jacobs Run. I apologize for not paying attention in class.
That's okay.
I'm a citizen here in the county for sixteen years and a resident of the 4th District. Came in today to encourage you to consider Mr. Mathis. I've known him for about twelve years now and he's a good friend and neighbor. We live right there across from the Board of Education in Jacobs Springs subdivision, so I know he could walk to work and pop in unexpected whenever the need might arise, see how things are going. He's got a long history of volunteer work here in the county since he moved in, he's served on the Parks and Recreation Board. You're well aware that he's currently the chairman of the Planning Commission, having served as a, you know, regular member in the past, he's risen up to that point. So, those are two volunteer sort of positions here in the county and he has a long history of that sort of service. He's made good contacts within the county, I know he worked well with Mr. Richak before he left the, you know, the Board. I think he would be an asset to the school division, he brings a lot of expertise in planning, his work in the Air Force managing the ACC, you know, force structure and command and control, excellent background for herding cats. He would be an asset to your Board and I hope you guys will consider him as the future nominee.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Leland Salamana. Probably didn't do well with that one either, did I?
How are you? My name's Leland Salamana, 111 Cindy Circle. I'm here, well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Steve Roan. I've been in this area from California, moved here six years ago and I've known Mr. Roan for that long. We coached together for the Grafton Tab Youth Football Rec League and I've coached with him for the last five years and I've known him to be a very detail-oriented, dedicated man. I know he's in senior management with his employer and he works very well with managing other people in addition to being assistant coach with me. He understands how to take direction very well and he's very organized, he keeps our team organized with equipment, with statistics, making sure the players get in and out of the game, they get their recommended plays, very detail-oriented with practice plans, coming up with drills and very good with working with young children. I now own and operate my own sports performance company in city center and I work with about ninety percent of the York County kids. I coached track at York High School for two years, was a jump coach for Grafton High School. So, he has helped me start my business doing anything from technical work to the menial work such as labor, helping me move things and from what I know of him, I believe he's a perfect candidate for this. I know he was the only one to run this year, did quite well, he put in a lot of hard work, standing out in front of Baileyfield every Friday night, doing what he needed to do to run a successful campaign and I believe he did that very well and I just want to say, I think you should consider him to be the, be your guy. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Bob Rudolph.
Hello folks, my name is Bob Rudolph and I reside at 402 Whispering Pine Drive in Grafton. I'm here to support Stephen Roan and I encourage you to appoint him for the District 4 open seat on the School Board. I've known him about ten years, very upstanding, very, very true gentleman, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roan. Pam Puchel.
My name is Pam Puchel, I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown, District 4. When a seat becomes vacant on the School Board, the Code of Virginia gives the Board the authority to appoint an interim member who will serve until a special election is held. In a daily press article, the Board's attorney said there were no legal requirements to involve the public. That is not accurate, as 22.1-29.1 requires a public hearing with ten days prior notice to be published, excuse me, in a newspaper, having a general circulation within the school division. To my knowledge, this Board has not done so. The public was only given notice in the wydaily.com, an internet news site, on May 11th. Only four candidates were named, leaving out the other five who applied. Each named candidate was given a two-sentence resume, the school division website only gave their names. Dr. George stated in a daily press article, "It gives us a chance to look at somebody we might like to have long-term." I would like to think about the qualifications, this is about the qualifications, not compatibility. The Board already has a history of too frequent unanimous decisions, a little bit of heated debate would be welcome since it reflects the acceptance and willingness to explore differing viewpoints. As to the candidates you have offered for comment, I can't really comment on them since this Board has made little information available. I would like to know if they have children in our schools. I think a personal stake in the system has much value. I would like to know how old they are. As an incumbent, they have a ninety-eight percent chance of being elected in November and I don't want someone on the Board who has passed their intellectual prime. Three of the candidates already hold or have held a position in county government and that does concern me. I would like to know if their current employment will allow them time to give their full attention to the school division. I have lots of unanswered questions. My tax dollars will pay their salary and will fund the decisions they make. I would truly like to make an informed argument for or against your chosen four candidates. Only those who personally know them can do so as we have been purposely kept in the dark by this Board. Less than thirty-six hours has passed since the release of merely their names, giving no one an opportunity to gather information on each candidate. You are charged with making the final selection, but it would have benefited everyone if you had given the public the ability to assist you with that selection. But then I imagine this decision has already been made and this is only a formality. I hope I'm wrong and I would like to give you a copy of the statute that I think you violated.
Give one to our attorney if you would. Just give this to our attorney if you would. Thank you. Dorothy Spurrow.
My name is Dorothy Spurrow and I live at 305 Fielding Lewis and I have the pleasure to live next door to Steve and Mary Roan and his two children, Morgan, who graduated from Grafton High School and just finished her first year at University of Mary Washington, and their son Josh, who was at Grafton High School. He's a very involved father in the community, in his children's activities, both school and in the community. He'd be a wonderful asset.
Thank you so much. Todd Mathis.
Hello, I'm Todd Mathis, live at 203 Jacobs Run, York County. Thought I'd come and address you today since I was out of town and we had a video, a telethon conference last week, so to put a face to the name. To address a couple of the concerns that were mentioned, I've been in the county since 2005, I have three children, two boys that went through part of elementary, all of middle school and all of high school at Grafton and graduated out and my little girl's fourteen and she'll be entering Grafton as a freshman this year. One of the reasons I'm interested in doing this, well, the biggest reason is, other than giving back to the community because that's something very important to me, something I didn't have a chance to do when I was active duty, since we had bounced around from community to community, so once we put roots down and wanted to give back. Education and training is something I've been passionate about my whole life. I've seen firsthand how this advances people, gives them the skills and abilities and the competence to succeed and advance their station in life and I'm a big advocate of it. And I want to support all the children and all the students in York County to help them achieve their full potential. And that's all I have right now.
All right, thank you, thank you. Larry Wilson.
Good evening, my name is Larry Wilson, I live at 7589 Spencer Road in Gloucester Point. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Stephen Roan. I've had the pleasure of knowing Stephen and his family, I guess about twenty years now. And all started with racing and racing's a community, everybody goes and it's always fun, the kids are involved, but Stephen's case, his professionalism and his dedication to his family has always impressed me. I've always considered him a friend and with our business, we own a company called Peninsula Hardwood Mowers in York County, and when people come to you and ask you to endorse them or help them, when they're gonna run a campaign, sometimes you go, whoa, I don't want to get involved. I've done this now about three times for people that asked me to be involved and it's been okay. In Stephen's case, he came to me, he talked to me, I said, "Are you sure you want to get involved in something political?" And I don't mean that wrong, but it takes time, you have to be dedicated. And he said, "I want to do it, my kids went to school here, I see some things that I can help with, I will dedicate the time." And always, it's kind of a joke, but he works from home and I always say, he wears his jammies around the house, but it's kind of a joke between us. But, we moved him here in 1999, if I remember correctly, from up in northern Virginia and he bought a home in Brandywine, which he asked me when he moved, he was looking, "What do you think about Brandywine?" I said, "Fantastic, nice neighborhood." So, they moved and they came here. His family's from Gloucester Matthewside, he could have moved there, no problem whatsoever, but he chose York County. I feel like by him doing that, he's committed to York County and I think that on the School Board, he would be an asset to y'all and also an asset to the county to look out basically how the funding's done and how things are taken care of. He went out, he put a lot of hours in running a campaign, he ran it very professionally, he didn't slander or say anything negative about anybody, he knocked doors, he did it the old way. I think he pulled forty-three, forty-four percent of the vote. I respect the other people who are running for, or trying to get into the School Board, but I feel like Mr. Roan did his job. He went out, he was not known by a lot of people in the county, so apparently, a big percentage of the people were impressed with him. And there again, I'm impressed with him and his family both. I feel like they are great people and I feel like he would definitely, there again, be an asset for y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Richard Hickson.
Richard Hickson, 800 Dandy Loop Road. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, first I'd like to express my sadness over Mr. Minter's untimely passing. That sad event brought this interim appointment to the Board for decision. I speak tonight in support of the School Board's selection of Stephen Roan as the interim School Board Member for District 4. I first met Mr. Roan early in 2010 when he joined my initiative to form a York County Republican Committee Study Group to focus on the county's budget process. The objective of the study was to make, come up with recommendations, make the process more transparent and also to marshal forces and assets and greater support for public safety and public education. We presented that report to the committee in May of 2010. During the three months that study group was working, we'd met routinely, at least once a week and during the course of those discussions and undertaking, I was impressed by Mr. Roan's grasp of organizational budget processes, his understanding of group dynamics that affected the public body's priorities, his focus on elected Board's responsibility for setting goals and priorities, his understanding of the elected Board's relationship with the Board's executive agent, in this case was the county administrator. In other words, Mr. Roan impressed me with his grasp of how members of an elected Board collectively set goals, establish policies and oversee the administration of resources. These impressions were very much in my mind when I had lunch with him over a year ago when he wanted to talk with me about the mechanics of running for a local elected office. He told me that he had reached the point in his life where he wanted to contribute more to York County schools than just serving as a volunteer coach for his son's teams at Grafton, Middle Grafton High. He wanted to help York County schools continue on a path of excellence and he thought his background might be of value in that regard. After I passed on my stored generic information on campaigns, I asked Mr. Roan, recommended he call Mr. Minter if he decided to toss his hat in the ring. At that time, Mr. Minter had not announced his intentions or his plans for the future. Later I learned that Mr. Roan did in fact call Mr. Minter and told him he had intended to run prior to announcing his intention to seek the District 4 seat. My only involvement with Mr. Roan's campaign in 2015 was to spend two hours at the Dare Polling Station handing out campaign literature. I have heard from friends however in District 4 and also comments earlier that Mr. Roan's campaign embraced positive themes throughout. The time Mr. Roan spent knocking on doors, talking with voters, studying the challenges facing York County School Division, buying campaign material is proof positive of his sincere commitment to serve York County schools as a School Board Member. He would become the District 4 seat with considerable professional experience, a comprehension of the challenges facing the school division in this digital age, a grasp of the Board's relationship with the Division Superintendent and managing daily operations and a firm understanding of the Board's role as the elected leadership of the York County schools. Having some background in the York County schools, I recommend Mr. Roan highly as your appointee as interim Board Member from District 4. Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Hickson. If there is someone who wishes to speak who has not done so already, I will allow it. Okay. These are your, thank you. Kathleen Howe.
Good evening. I too find it sad that we have to be here, but it's nice to know that people are stepping up and want to continue on and carry on the legacy that Paige Minter has filled here on the Board. It was rather frustrating for me to hear about this meeting from a concerned citizen. I think it would have been beneficial to put it in the newspaper or even send out a Y email to all the parents in all the school districts, like you do with the Board meetings, to really get a good turnout here this evening. Based on the four candidates and the little information that was written about them in the article, I found it difficult to make a decision here tonight. Not only that, but on behalf of Mr. Roan's, I also thought that it was almost like a slap in the face, if you will, and I don't mean anything towards Paige Minter stating that Paige had fifty-six percent and Mr. Roan's had four hundred and thirty-one votes. That to me is irrelevant, the bottom line is, there was somebody opposing him and he was running because he cared. I do not know any information about the other people, nor did I have the opportunity to research anything about them. So, for me to speak on anyone's behalf tonight wouldn't be justified in my opinion because I feel when I cast a vote, a vote was cast based on the information I had access to, number one, what I know about the candidates, what have they done, how long have they lived here. I know Todd Mathis stated how long he's lived here and he has three children, one of which is still fourteen years of age. It's nice that he at least showed. I came tonight in hopes, and I apologize for walking in late, but I had hoped that some of the other candidates would have been here this evening, so at least you can associate a name with a face and get a feel of what that person may be thinking. And I'm not saying you judge a book by its cover, but you have to more or less say, what is this person willing to give? How much does it mean to be on this position tonight? Does that automatically mean that I say Todd Mathis is the person? No, because I still don't have a lot of questions answered. Unfortunately, that decision isn't mine, but I do know this, I have a belief that whoever fills that empty seat that sits beside Mrs. Haywood this evening, that person, even though it's an interim chair, will then wind up being the person re-elected come November 8th because that's the name that stands out in the forefront. I'm not saying good, bad or indifferent, I'm saying it's hard for me to make a justified decision and on that, I guess, I will have to place tomorrow's future in your hands because each of those students represent our future and the way you mold them is the rewards you will reap in the future. So, we need to always put the students first and I appreciate all each one of you have done and continue to do by serving this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes, unless there's anybody else? Yeah.
Hello, my name is Morgan Roan and I live at 307 Fielding Lewis Drive. I am Mr. Roan's daughter, of course. I graduated from Grafton High School this past year and I just finished my first year at the University of Mary Washington. My father has taught me and my brother a lot about organizing and budgeting for all of our future endeavors and especially things that we would like to buy for ourselves. We always learned how to buy our own equipment or our own like entertainment devices, like an iPad or an iPod, we always had to work for the money to pay for it because he wanted to teach us good financial skills. He would have us play certain games that taught us how to organize and finance certain things that we would need to complete certain tasks. He's always taught us how to work very hard and get things done. And maybe all the other candidates are more qualified or equally qualified, but I know my father is the only one who went out and decided to run and put forth the work in the effort to make himself known and decide to run for this position. And I really do feel that should speak volume to everybody else because since he's the one that's put in the work, he really seems that he wants to do this and give back to the community. So, I really do feel like he would give a lot of benefits and be a really good asset to your Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman George and the rest of the Board members. My name is Mary Pat Gallagher, I reside at 219 Silver Fox Trace, Yorktown, Virginia. I am a York Education Association member and I'm here tonight to just address you and kind of repeating some of what I've heard already this evening about the poor communication of tonight's meeting. I feel that it is important for us to have an opportunity to speak about the upcoming candidates and to meet them and as a disservice to us, they're not even here. I wasn't even aware of that necessarily, I heard through Wy Daily, just through other members, that tonight's meeting was taking place and I felt it was important to be here to speak to you in regards to their upcoming seat. Visibility is always important in schools and being even a visual learner, it's important to be able to put a face to a name. I understand there is a blurb out there about each of the members, each of the men running, people running, but it is difficult to place them in my mind unless I have a picture of them, such as house hunting, you need to take that picture so that you go back to your list and you see what, who is out there, what house is out there for you to be able to go back and spend more time looking at. These candidates are important, our seat is, the seat open is a very important position because you support us, you support our schools and without you, we have a weak link and without the candidates present, I believe there is a weak link. The commitment is very important to be present. Their commitment in serving as a School Board Member helps us in learning more about why funding is such an issue, why these other issues are so prevalent. And again, I just want to reiterate the fact that every opportunity that we have to speak to members of the School Board is so important, such as speaking to people that are running for the seat is as important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sabina Booth, 502 Robin Hood Drive, Yorktown, Virginia. I'm here as the York County Education Association Vice President. I appreciate you allowing me to address you. You've been entrusted, voted into your offices and entrusted with many difficult decisions and I want to thank you personally for your time and effort that you put towards making our schools better for our students. I'm also an employee of York County Schools and it's something I'm very passionate about. Many of you know me and know that I am passionate about this topic. The one thing I said earlier that we entrusted you to make the best decision, I personally feel like each one of you individually has your heart in the right place. I want you to keep your heart in the right place and put the candidate that will best serve our students' needs. We have gone too long with too little. It's been over ten years that the county hasn't fully funded what the School Board has requested. We need to add a strong member to this group that will be able to convey the message that you have all been really putting an effort toward, I believe conveying, that school is important, our students are important, the dynamics of classrooms have changed, the funding has not been there. The person that you appoint in this position will most likely run in November, this needs to be a strong candidate and once again, you're entrusted, the community has come out tonight, maybe not as many, maybe not as many voices as could have, but we need that strong presence, somebody that will be able to work best with Board Supervisors, keep our students, number one. Nobody likes taxes, I understand this, but everything else in our lives have gone up, somebody has to convey, perhaps taxes need to go up so that we can continue to have the best schools. I told a lot of people this little thing earlier today, it came to me in the shower this morning. We've been making lemonade for years and in the beginning, we had really good lemonade, but we've squeezed those lemons so dry, we're just serving sugar water. So, whoever comes up there needs to be, to fill that spot, needs to be a person that will be able to, the best qualified person, and I'm entrusting you that you will choose with your brains and your hearts, that you'll put our students' needs first and put the person that can make the biggest difference to help you all accomplish the goals that serve our community the best. Thank you for your time listening.
Thank you, Sabina.
Good evening, Chairman, my name is Carol Bauer, I reside at 314 Brook Lane and I'm a proud member of the York Education Association and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about this position because it is an important position. You all do make a lot of decisions that affect our students, affect our staff and affect the county's future and so this position is an important position. I asked the Board members earlier because I didn't really know what to expect of this meeting tonight. I didn't know if it was gonna be an informal meeting. meeting tonight. I didn't know if it was going to be an informal meeting, a formal meeting. How are we, the public, supposed to find out about these candidates? I'm very grateful that Todd is here. I think that that's great, but again, we don't know the other candidates, except for Stephen, who did run for District Four. I asked for contact information, and I don't have contact information for these people who are running, so it's difficult for me to make decisions as well. And then I asked also to the school board, "What is your vetting procedure?" I know that you interviewed some other people. You narrowed it down to these four people, and I assume that you had great questions. Unfortunately, we don't know what any of those questions are. We don't know what these people's positions are, their vision is, what they see the future for York County schools. It would be awesome if we actually had an opportunity to talk to these members and to find out. Now, the WYdaily did give us a couple of lines about the background of these people, so appreciate having that, but really, we would like the school division and the school board to be giving us a little bit more information. I appreciate the people who did step up. Actually, I appreciate all the people who are here tonight, who are giving their viewpoints. I asked also to the school board members, "What kind of input are you looking for? Are you just looking for a popularity contest? How many people are coming up? How many people know the particular candidates? Are you looking for somebody that's really going to fill the shoes of Paige Mentor? Or are you really looking for somebody who's going to be a good member on this board, who is not going to rubber stamp everything, who is going to be asking the questions?" It's good to have a team member, a team player, but it's also really important to have somebody who will ask those questions, someone who's not afraid to say, "Wait a minute, I don't know the answer to this. I need you to find out the answer for me." We appreciate having the opportunity to speak to you tonight, but I do think it would be good if we knew or had a picture, or we had some more information about the candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Stephen Roan, 307 Fielding Lewis Drive. First of all, thanks to the board for opportunity to pull us together tonight, and I just want to apologize for not having the opportunity to chat with everybody before the meeting started, but before we adjourn, I just want to let you know that I'll be happy to stay and chat with whoever afterwards. I didn't want people to walk out and miss that opportunity. So, again, thanks for the opportunity tonight, and take care.
Thank you. Okay, if that's all the speakers we have, a couple of comments, just to reiterate. We have Stephen Roan, we have Todd Mathis, we have Wanda Fralick, and we have Jimmy Richardson. Got to choose my words carefully. It's real easy, from your vantage point, whoever may have had the strong opinions, to chastise us for not doing things in a timely manner. Let me tell you a couple of things. You have 45 days, and Ms. Pouchelle, we did meet every deadline. We checked with our attorney, we checked with the county attorney, we checked with surrounding school divisions, and we're about to get an Attorney General interpretation of it also, just to make sure of this. So, I don't really depend on a community member or a newspaper reporter to tell us when we're following the law, okay? We are following the legal proceedings. We've done everything, and basically, according to the legal proceedings and everybody that we've checked with, we don't really have to do the public hearing. This is an interim appointment that we have not had to do before. This is not the same as a board supervisor appointment. We are following exactly what we need to follow. Now, I'd like to point something out. I like the comment over here, "You have entrusted us to do what we do." So, which is it? Have you entrusted us to make a decision, or have you not, okay? This is not about you coming out and voting for someone. We want your input. Your vote will be in November, and you can vote your heart. This is not what this is about. So, as good as it might feel to sit there or stand there and put us down for this, which I resent, because we spent hour after hour after hour on this, there are certain things about certain candidates that do not qualify them, and I do not feel obligated to tell you that, and I stand by that. And I'm not so sure, if you were in the shoes of the other five candidates, if you would want their personal resumes released. I just don't think that's the case. So, that's where I stand on this. November is your time. We invited you out here, and we value your opinion, but I kept hearing, you know, "How am I supposed to vote on this? How am I supposed to vote on this?" Well, we don't, we aren't here for a vote. We're here to hear your opinion. So, anything else anybody would like to add? All right. Going to close the public hearing. Thank you to all of those that came at it, especially the people that had beneficial things to say to us that could be meaningful in the discussion. Thank you.